February 25th, 2020, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order, and ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on creation for God, invisible for the need of justice.
We certainly hope those that had last week off enjoyed their time off. This is a reminder that this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio. First item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve our January 28th, 2020 minutes.
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing non-lawary, pull the committee, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening, everyone. How is everyone tonight?
Good, thank you.
Great. Yep. I'm going to start with personnel updates. We have been busy in hiring staff. We have a new grade five teacher over at the middle school. Her name is Angela LaBelle. We have a new PE teacher over at Park Ave Elementary School. Her name is Leslie Pitts. We have a new ABA, paraprofessional at Park Ave. Her name is Victoria Mankowska.
Good job.
We have a new ABA at Park Ave Elementary School, and his name is John Uno. We have a new ABA at Park Ave Elementary School, and her name is Allison Rosina. And we have a new school year administrative assistant. Her name is Tammy Beland. We have a new paraprofessional at Bartlett High School. Her name is Alyssa Note. We have moved Carrie Reed to the full year administrative assistant position at Park Ave Elementary School. We have, I have received the resignation from Michael Zajak, principal over at the Webster Middle School. And I would like to inform you that we have welcomed back Michael Harpen to the Webster Middle School. Other updates on my report include a snapshot of the Adult Education Program Quality Review Update. We received the FY 2020 Adult Basic Education Grant Increase of $11,798. And that was effective January 15th. These additional funds are going to be used for professional development and a new data specialist. I've invited Mrs. Leslie Baker here tonight to give you a brief overview on the final draft version of the program review. The purpose of the program review is to look at and assess the quality of the adult education program at any given point in time. And as, and they measure us against ACLS indicators for program quality. I'm pleased to say that we are proficient and developing in all areas that they assess. And if Mrs. Baker would like to speak, to give us a little bit of more detail, that would be great.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. We had a program quality review on October 17th, and ACLS, our Adult and Community Learning Services, came out and evaluated us on four of 10 indicators that they use statewide. This is a brand-new process as of last year. So this was our first time having a program quality review. We were very pleased when we got the report back and were rated as developing, as Superintendent Gogan said, as proficient or developing in any of the four categories. The programs that were evaluated last year, 68% of them fell within the developing or proficient category. So we're right with the most of our peers in the field. And I'm also pleased to say that if you look at the quality indicators we were rated on, we knew internally these were areas that we wanted to grow in. We've been working on them all year. So we're expecting the next time we have a program quality review that we'll receive higher ratings, we're hoping.
I would like to compliment the Adult Education Program staff and Mrs. Baker for their work with being able to be reflective practitioners and taking feedback and using that feedback to improve their program. They're constantly looking at ways to improve. And when the onsite visitors did come, they did compliment the leadership team for their work. So I wanted to publicly thank you for your hard work.
And they also complimented the district on how well-integrated we are within the district. That's not all common across the state either. So they were appreciative that we were valued in this district. So, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
I just have a quick question. Surprise, right? So you came to us within the last couple of years, and there was just pretty dramatic changes, really positive changes, to the programs that you were offering. Was this assessment due to those changes that you incorporated? Or is this a change in their assessment of your core program that you've had in place for quite a while? Does that make sense?
Both, yeah.
Both, okay.
It's a snapshot visit of what is happening currently. So what's happening currently were the dramatic changes that we had told you we were moving towards. They came out with a team of nine, who started at noon time and stayed until about 9:00 PM. And they visited us at four different sites throughout the day, had interviews with staff, interview with students, and then interviews with the leadership team as well. So it was pretty comprehensive. They were looking at four different particular areas and asked quite a few questions in those areas, so.
So more than halfway through this year, you feel pretty good about what you've done up to this point, and their assessment relatively accurate about, you know, issues that you felt you continued, your group, your team continued to need to prove upon?
Yes.
Considering how new the program is?
Yes. Yes, we felt we have made marked progress, especially in the area of curriculum. We were rated as proficient. We are developing as far as instruction and assessments. And part of that is due to the fact that we have quite a few new staff members. So using some of the funds that were given to us in that increase of almost $12,000, we're focusing on professional development for our newer people to get them up to snuff.
Well, thank you very much again. Follow-up on Dr. Gogan's comments. I've always felt that we do a lot of great things in this district, but adult ed, I think, is one area that people aren't even really aware of what is offered. And I know you and your team work very hard, so thank you.
Thank you. One of the things that is happening across the district is the communication is two-way. So we recently, as you know, we hold a ELL parent advisory group. We actually walked four people over from our ELL parent advisory group, and they signed up for Leslie's program. So that collaboration is stronger and continuing to build.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Leslie. On other updates, I'll just give you a snapshot of, since we haven't seen you in a little bit. We've been working in collaboration with the high school on the program of studies, which you'll see tonight. The central office team has been working with the administrators and on that final product. I wanted to follow up with letting you know that I did have that meeting with the bottom-line organization. I had a conference call with them. They're an organization that works with first-generation, low-income students to get them through college. I did speak to them, and at this current point in time, they're unable to offer and extend their programs to us. They're Boston-based, but, I'm a little persistent, they are working on developing a curriculum, and they're willing to consider sharing their curriculum when they're finalized, when their curriculum is finalized, with sharing that. So I have a date marked in my calendar to call them back in September, and we will be following up with them. Other news, we've been working in collaboration with the staff and the administration at the Webster Middle School for quite some time on developing a new schedule. And I'm, we are still working on that. We're working in conjunction with the staff and the union, and things are moving along very positively. It is our goal to roll out the finalized draft of the schedule to the staff at the staff meeting next Tuesday. We have a half-day professional development day on Wednesday. When I say "we," there's a scheduling committee over at the Webster Middle School, along with myself and the administration. And then we still have some PR to do with parents and students. So there's still some work to be done, but it's very complex and coming along well. I would like to let you know that we have conducted learning walkthroughs at the Webster Middle School in conjunction with our instructional leadership team at the Webster Middle School, with Department of Education content specialists. That was a very fruitful day. We were able to, these are non-evaluative evaluations, to have really open conversations about what we were seeing in the classrooms, looking not at specific teachers, but at patterns and what we need to work on. And the content specialists and the instructional leadership team themselves at the Webster Middle School were able to be in the classrooms and share information. So we're going to be continuing to do learning walkthroughs, hopefully getting our instructional leadership teams at the high school and the elementary school to partner with the administration to have those kind of reflective conversations and set up for action steps. We also held learning walkthroughs over at Bartlett High School. We did not have the Department of Education with us on that day, but those were also very meaningful. We, as you know, meet monthly with our district safety team that is comprised of administrators and across the district, and the Webster Police and EMS, and Mrs. Baker and Lois Taylor also join us. They do the before and after-school programming and the extended day. And I'm pleased to let you know we are on, you know, doing ongoing preparation for safety preparedness. With regards to the Student Opportunity Plan, we attended the central office, listened to a webinar, we have the template, we have the draft of the plan pretty much complete. I would like to suggest that we hold a public hearing at our next school committee meeting, which would be March 10th, so that we can share that plan and collect feedback on that plan.
I don't think we have enough time, do we? We can double-check tomorrow. I forget, there, in the town charter, there's a certain number of days.
14.
Is it 14?
I don't know, I'm guessing.
I think it is.
We would, we really need that date. Otherwise, we'd have to schedule another meeting. I won't be. It's the 25th. That's the one I'm on.
Well, we'll take, I don't disagree. We'll take this offline, and obviously, if per the charter, we can schedule it. By the next meeting, we will. Otherwise, you and I can discuss Plan B.
So, just so, and I will send you the draft of the plan, just so you know, it really lines up with our current budget. And it's very much what the Department of Education is looking for. How are we going to support our groups and our parents of kids that are not receiving, reaching proficiency? So a lot of the things that we have already been doing over the last two years kind of fit right into that. And all of the things that we've placed into the budget definitely fit into the plan. That plan is due to the state April 1st. Okay. I would also like to let you know that we received notification from the state that we are one of 48 districts who are being recognized again this year for achieving the goals of the School Breakfast Challenge. And that is thanks to the Park Ave Elementary School, who have reached 87.59% of participation rates, which is wonderful. As you may or may not know, we've been working on the Bully Intervention and Prevention Plan, and that has been revised with administrators and counselors at our school, and it is on our website, open for public comment, and that is open until March 1st. We will take the feedback that we have received from the public and then redraft what we need to redraft and bring it to the school committee for approval. As, just a reminder, I know everyone's talking about the coronavirus. We have sent out flu guidelines to students, parents through our newsletters, and we want to make sure that parents keep their kids home when they're sick, and so that's gone out. Our ELL parent advisory group met, and we have new members joining us, which is really exciting. And for upcoming events, this Thursday, we have Kindergarten Information Night over at Park Ave Elementary School at 6:30. We have MOFRA employees volunteering, 22 of them, to come to read to K to two students for Dr. Seuss's birthday on March 2nd. We have pre-K registration open from February 24th through March 27th. Parents can come right to central office to register their students anytime between 10 to 2 o'clock. And our Grade One concerts are coming up on the 18th and 19th at 9:30 in the morning over at the Park Ave Elementary School. And finally, I want to give out some recognitions to our Impressions Show Choir and Mr. Peter Carney. The students came in second place at the Central Mass Show Choir Festival. Congratulations. And it was National Counseling Week. I was going to fill you in on that, and we thank all of our counselors for all the work that they do. They had a wonderful MCAS parent night at Park Ave Elementary. I want to give a shout-out to our academic interventionists and teachers and administrators who planned that. And our Webster Middle School cheerleaders came in first place in their first-ever competition. I want to give a shout-out for them. And I am going to leave all the Bartlett High School sports news to Logan. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, thank you. Next item on the agenda is student update. Logan Peranto, good evening, Logan.
Hi, how we doing, board?
Committee? People, the board's down the, I'm joking, we're doing fine.
I just want to start by talking about how there is First Annual Winter Pep Rally on Friday, February 14th, to honor our winter athletic programs, as well as the Boys' Varsity Basketball Program, as they competed in the postseason Clark Tournament in Worcester, Massachusetts. Second, changing of second semester schedules has ended, and student schedules are now set in stone. Mrs. Sanborn held a Valentine's Day Card Day after school to help people who, loved ones haven't gotten a Valentine's Day card, they made cards for them. Officer Whiting and other Webster Police Officers held a Hoops for Hope Program at Park Ave all during the break, with a lot of Bartlett basketball players showing up to it and helping out the kids. Signups for Mr. Bartlett have begun, and they're still looking for one more to get it started. For our clubs, the Pitt Band and Show Choir Clubs had a competition at Tantasco, and they did very well, bringing in a lot of awards. Rex Gutierrez Medina, who was a part of the Art Club, won first place in the sculpture category for the Anna Maria Art and Design Competition. The Medical Careers Club has an upcoming CPR class on February 27th. For athletics, the boys and girls track seasons came to an end, with the boys finishing with a 7-6 overall record, and the girls finishing with a 7-7 record. The girls' basketball team had their season come to an end with a record of 7-12. They had a win against Southbridge to wrap up their season. The boys' basketball team wrapped up their regular season with a record of 17-2. They then went on to play at the Clark Tournament and defeated Millbury in the quarterfinal round. Their next upcoming game is this Friday, February 28th, against either Greater Little Tech or Auburn, depending on tonight's result. The winner cheer team won the Swickle Cheer Competition and also won Grand Champs of the Competition, which was held at Dever Proudy High on February 23rd. They will now compete in the regionals on Sunday, March 8th. Lastly, the spring athletics signups take place tomorrow. All girls and, all boys and girls interested in playing in baseball, softball, tennis, or track will be at the meeting tomorrow. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Logan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Certainly, on behalf of the entire committee, good luck Friday night.
Thank you.
And hopefully you will, good luck with continuing further in the playoffs. It was nice to get that first by, wasn't it?
Yep, of course.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Unless the committee objects, we have many special guests with us this evening, so I'm going to jump around on the agenda, so folks don't have to sit through what most likely will be a very long and exciting meeting. The next item I'm going to jump to is actually the principal report for Ann Thomas, Bartlett High School, because I think Mr. Thomas, and he's very happy about this, has some wonderful students to make him look good this evening.
Yes, I'm glad they showed up. I'm going to, I'll do the update on attendance afterwards. We talked about the College Readiness Program at Nichols before, and at your request, you said, "I'd really like to hear from some students," because I could tell you how awesome it was, but I think you'd rather hear from the horse of smell. So Gabby Pia Barczyk and Talia Benyenda are here. They are two of the students that went with us, and they'll tell you a little bit about what they did and entertain any questions.
So I usually get in trouble when I say something like this, but these are truly two of my favorite juniors ever. And Talia, you have to turn that microphone on, or I'll get yelled at for, there's a button on top of it. There you go.
At first, we'd like to apologize, because we originally went to Park Ave, because when we presented, you remember, we presented like in seventh or eighth grade, it was over there, and then we like walked around the school. One lady was like, "Oh, it's at Bartlett now." We're like, "Oh, jeez." She unlocked the door for us.
Well, that's a good reason. I mean, that was like six years ago that we were at Park Ave, but that's okay.
Hey, we were early to that one.
You weren't late to our meeting, by the way, so thank you.
All right, do you want to start?
So originally, like, I liked the plan when Mr. Thomas first came to us to tell us that we're going to go to Nichols and kind of get more like a college readiness program set. I liked it because I personally don't really know what I want to do yet. Like, I feel like I need more of an experience, see what's out there, to decide on what I like, because I'm more indecisive. Like, I know Talia has had like a pretty good idea of what she likes.
Yeah, I kind of know where I want to go, but it's not even really about that, like at Nichols. It got postponed a lot, so at first I thought like, oh, it's going to be something that they just wanted to throw together to really get off their schedule. But when we went, it was very planned out. They had presenters, and I really liked, there was a lot of interaction. And it wasn't just sitting there and listening to someone like just talk and talk and talk about college, stuff like that. So it was really nice, because we actually sat there, it was interactive, and they really did gear it towards like juniors, not just people looking at college. Like, it was really meant for us.
Yeah, and speaking of it being interactive, like they had questions, the presentation was, like she said, very interactive. And then not only did we like talk about the finances or one specific thing, we had different desks of different eras, and we like prepared questions that we'd want to ask them, and then we walked up to the tables and like, we were kind of told to talk to more than just one table by like these stickers and getting a prize at the end, but like, we got to ask more questions, learn more about like the different aspects of college too, not just like the education or finances, like there was a lot more to it.
Yeah, there is different tables set up all around. I remember one of them is like finance, one of them was just like life on campus, and there was of course like athletics, and like for those, it was really nice for athletics specifically, because there was actual like athletes there. And I liked talking to them because, like everyone, not even just the athletes, they really give you, they start off with saying like about their experience at Nichols, but then they really go into, in general, friends that they have at different colleges, how their schedules work, and what are the different opportunities that we would get.
Yeah, they were more relatable, because, I mean, we're in high school, they're in college, so it's kind of like relatable that way, but it's also different, because it's now college sports.
Like, it was an overall really good experience. None of us complained about it, like.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, like, it wasn't something that like we got back on the bus and we're like, "Oh, wow."
Like, that was always the time. We liked it.
Yeah.
Well, the fact that teen, a group of teenagers didn't complain, it has to be really, really good. Are there any questions or comments from the members? So I know both of you have older siblings that obviously have gone through the college selection process, and even going through that with them indirectly, you still obviously found this very helpful when you look at not only what you might want to do, or the type of college that you might select, but also what type of major you might want to select.
Yeah, so definitely, like with Kiara, I kind of just, like, my parents didn't want me like stressed out about it as a sophomore, so they kind of just, so I was like, "Oh, yeah, like, we're going to like the FAFSA meeting and stuff like that." And they, of course, talked about finances, but they really told us, like, "Pick the school, like, don't base it on just finance." Like, of course, you want to, of course, like be able to afford it, but they really said, like, "Do you want a large or big school? Like, find out all of those details first, and then like the FAFSA and everything comes afterwards." And I thought the person, I don't really remember her name, but whoever talked about the money didn't, again, didn't drag it out, make it boring. Like, she really just hit like the key points. And they also went into things like, like our essays, like what, like how we should write those.
Yeah, and it was like direct, summarized, and they gave us tips, and like she was talking about different apps and stuff that we can use.
So your brothers haven't insisted that you go to Lowell?
My, no. My oldest brother is more like calm, like reserved, like to himself, so I didn't really get much of the college aspect from him. Like, he just did everything himself. And he's not very like, he didn't really want to do sports in college, he's not very like part of different groups and after-school, like extracurriculars, so I can't relate to him that much on that aspect. But like my other brother, he's thinking about doing intramural sports and like other things. I just don't relate as, I guess, as much to them, because I do like student council and other extracurricular activities. So I got to learn more beyond what I learned from them.
Well, that's good, and I do say this with all sincerity, you two certainly are what is best about Bartlett and our school district, so thank you for joining us. You weren't late, you can come second or fourth Tuesday of any of the month. Feel free to show up. We'll give you a microphone, it'll be great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, girls.
No, leave it on, we like to hear them. Thank you.
So those girls happened to be in the Nichols Honors Academy, but I think there were 24 or so that went on, and we brought like 45, we had invited 50. So we tried to expand the opportunities and the access to Nichols. And there was one young man who, who just emailed me before I came over, and he said it was his father's birthday, and he couldn't come tonight. But he was a student who had been having some difficulties this year. And I said, "You should come," and just see, and like halfway through the day, he's like, "Mr. Thomas, I can do this." And I'm like, "Yeah, you can." Like, and all of a sudden, he was like asking questions, and so we, he meets with guidance counselors now and talking about his grades, is, you know, on track, so exactly the type of thing that I wanted to have happen, just open up some eyes and say, "This is within my reach, like, I can figure this out." So there were a lot of kids there who had never been on a college campus, had never been like to Nichols before, and the way they structured it was like, like they were saying, "This isn't about coming to Nichols, this is about colleges and how they review applications, how they look at grades, all that kind of stuff." So it was very beneficial. For attendance, we're running about 1% to 2% better than we were last year. I think that is partially due to the weather right now, actually, for the mild winter. As you are aware, we implemented that 10-point deduction for attendance this year. It's difficult at this point in time to say that overall, then in effect, what we have seen is the students who lost 10 points, the number of those gaining it back for improved attendance over the next quarter has been increased. So, you know, if you don't care about school, you don't care if you lost 10 points. So it may not have that big effect on chronic absenteeism, but for those kids who do, that have a chance to earn it back, we've seen an improvement in their attendance. We've also seen a dramatic drop in the number of tardy students. And again, that may be weather-related, we're not sure, but right now, we're slightly ahead of where we were last year.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Thomas? Again, thank you very much. Next item I'm going to jump to is the Item B, under New Business, Approval of Overnight Field Trip, Bartlett High School DECA to State Competition. Good evening, Mrs. Hayning.
Hello, how are you?
It's wonderful to see you again, it's an annual tradition.
Yes, it is. We're going to keep our fingers crossed that it happens every year.
That's right.
So I have seven students that have qualified for the state competition in Boston this coming Thursday, February 27th to Saturday, the 29th. I have three juniors who'll be attending, Ryan Spitz, Noah Azawi, and Kathryn James, and four seniors, Ahmed Azawi, Alexis Leighton, Tiana Smith, and Brianna Ward. There'll be two of us driving the students. I'll be the only one staying over, but Ryan Spitz's dad, George, will be dropping students off and then picking them up on Saturday. And we'll be staying at the Marriott Copley Square. So I am asking for permission to bring these seven students, and keeping our fingers crossed that they do really well.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
Just one comment. It's a wonderful experience for students, and I want to thank you for pushing this program and maintaining this program for our kids. It's an experience like none other.
Thank you.
And they, they're going to do well.
They will, I mean, they're a great group of kids. The two Azawi boys are actually working together, and when they were called to the stage at the district competition, they were pretty proud, they were hugging each other, it was actually really nice. The two girls that were here, they were part of DECA as well. Nate was part of DECA, Logan, so the program's really getting bigger, and I don't want to say more popular, but definitely more well-known. So it's, it's good news.
I'm 90% sure I know the answer to this, but because it's not in the packet, you have signed forms from every student that's attending?
Absolutely.
Without any further questions or comments for the committee, I will entertain a motion to approve the DECA field, overnight field trip to the state competition, February 27th to the 29th.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, lawary, pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, and good luck to you and the students.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Have fun. Thank you.
Good luck.
Next item I am going to jump to is Item C, under New Business, Approval of Overnight Field Trip, Bartlett Student to All-State Choir Conference. And it is such a joy to see Mr. Carney once again.
Coming a regular.
That's good, I said to the girls, second and fourth Tuesday, come on down. How are you? You have to talk into the mic or I could yell that.
Don't want you getting yelled at.
No.
So the, the conference is not only for students, but it's also for the, the teachers as well. Um, while they're in rehearsal, practicing, the teachers are in professional development. We get to choose workshops and last all day from eight morning till, like, five o'clock at night for two days. Um, it's March fifth through the seventh. Hannah's parents will be driving her into Boston, but I will be chaperone on-site for the, for the trip, and then her parents will be attending the concert and taking her home afterwards.
Any questions or comments from the committee? As a complete side note, congratulations to you and your middle school students, that's really exciting.
Middle school?
Oh, that was cheering. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Someday, maybe.
I'm sure it'll happen.
I, I love hearing all the great things that are happening, and awesome middle school cheerleaders.
See, I should've paid attention, I apologize. With no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to approve the overnight field trip to the All-State Choir Conference in Boston, March fifth to the seventh.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, do you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, good luck, and congratulations to Hannah.
Thank you.
Thank you for inspiring the students.
I assume you're here for the program of studies, correct?
Come join us.
You wanna jump into that? Or you wanna...
No, let, let, can we go to the middle school?
Well, why don't we go back to the original, okay.
Okay.
Um, so continuing on with the agenda as planned, the next item on the superintendent's report is the Business Manager Report, Monique Perangeli, good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We didn't want the room empty for all the exciting stuff that's gonna happen right now, so thank you.
I don't understand why they don't stay.
You know? First thing, School Building Committee update. So I spoke with Jennifer Flynn from the MSBA, our contact, our new contact, and she said things are progressing at the state level. Um, they are, they have moved the enrollment certification up to the senior staff review. They are hoping to get it out early next week to us. From then, we will have twenty-one days, I believe, to turn it around and send it back. Um, we will also be receiving the feasibility agreement that we will need to fill out and send back. I asked about the reimbursement rates, and she said she couldn't tell me that it will be in the feasibility, I mean, in the enrollment certification that we get in the mail should outline our rates. So she said, uh, they're working on it, it's been a very busy season for them with enrollment studies, and, um, they are right on target, and just sit tight and wait. So that's where I'm at, I'm at the sit tight and wait. Not much more I can do on that until we get the letters, which hopefully will be mid-week next week. Uh, the second item on the agenda is the Capital Improvement Plan. So annually, we update the Capital Improvement Plan. It is a five-year plan, but it's done annually with the dollar amounts, um, we put an increase on that. At the town, special town meeting, um, you'll notice I'm just gonna jump, I guess I can go through this. Uh, we know the middle, uh, the high school needs repairs, roof, windows, HVAC. Um, we've added increases to that, some of the fields. Um, that total I presented at town meeting was sixteen million, two hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. Again, I know these amounts are under, they're, they're underestimates. Um, after talking with some architects and stuff, these numbers would be definitely inflated. And regardless of where we're going with the project, I think it would be beneficial for us to maybe, once we start going through, is have an updated capital improvement plan done by professionals versus me just tacking on a percentage. That's been happening since two thousand and eight, we've just been adding a percentage on to get us real more, uh, accurate information that we're presenting to the community out there. Um, as you can see, we don't have anything for Park Ave, being a new building, and middle school has, um, just normal building upgrades. We are seeing more and more things already failing at the middle school. The rooftop units and stuff are consistently breaking. We seem to be going through at least one or two a year that are requiring major upgrades. Um, we just had another one go above the library, but that might have been, I think we're about five thousand dollars into that repair. And they just said they believe it is from the lightning strike in the January storm that we had, because as they've been finding out and fixing, they fixed one thing, and then they're finding out now the next thing is broken, the next thing is broken. So I'll be working with the insurance company. Now that we have it, they're writing up, um, a report for me that I can send over to insurance and see if we can get some reimbursement on that repair. But, um, you know, we need to maintain our buildings, we need to keep up. Um, things need to be fixed in a timely manner, and we need to be proactive with the repairs. So, you know, I would like to see the community in the town actually start putting money aside for capital repairs. It's not something that they have done, something that I bring up to Doug. Um, and I will be bringing it up on a regular basis. They should start allocating maybe some of that free cash on the side just for capital repairs that need to happen in the building. So our total, uh, cost for capital repairs as a district right now is sixteen million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So if the committee would approve our capital improvement plan, um, I forward over to the town administrator for the record, um, so they have it. And, um, hopefully, we can start funding some of these items in the future.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the FY two thousand twenty-one Capital Improvement Plan as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing la, uh, none, Laurie, do you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's a unanimous vote.
Thank you so much. Next item is our end-of-year audit, our FY nineteen end-of-year audit. Uh, that was completed, we've been working on that, um, since probably January. They came and picked up some information, um, they finalized the report, it was very good, I'm pleased with it. Uh, there were two minor items. I'm gonna use a very technical term for the first one, um, that they found on the report. Um, if you look on page one, end-of-year line, item one thirty, decreased by one point one four six million. The technical term that I'm gonna use, that there were two columns, you could either put it in column two or column five. I know it belongs in column five, I had, I had a brain fart. That's the technical term I wanna use.
The only accounting term I can understand.
I don't know why I put it in column two, I have no idea. It was just in the wrong column, I don't know why, it was a technical, technical oops, um, so...
We're all human.
Yeah, so it was real, a real gotcha there for a moment. I said, what do you mean it's in the wrong column? So, and the other one was a minor thing, it was something on FY, it, it goes for the FY twenty, so Schedule Nineteen is your projected year that they budget. And they found, um, on the town side, an increase in long-term debt service from construction. That's something they discovered during the audit, the estimates. So it's really just an estimate that you're doing at that point, but it's still, we try and get it as close as possible. So that was adjusted. So those amendments have been made, and the report is final, it was a really good audit, um, and I'm pleased with that. Any questions on that? All right, and the last other updates, uh, we are full of audits this year. So far this year, we've done the town audit, we've done the end-of-year audit, we've done, um, a food service program review, uh, we are working on the single audit. Um, I informed you that we have the procurement audit coming up. I have scheduled a student activity audit. Um, and then I got a great piece of news in the mail that they're doing an onsite monitoring visit, um, for, scheduled for June, where they're gonna come in and review all the FY twenty Esse grants. So that's your Title One, Title Two A, Title Three, Title Four, um, that we received in FY nineteen. So good times are coming, we're loving it.
It can only last two to three days.
That's all, that's all, and, you know, they're, they're always, you know, they're, I'm not worried. They always come in, that's their job, to come in and look at these things, and it's fine. Um, it's just, it seems like our audits have been non-stop this year. And, uh, and what it is, is that there's really been some pressure on the federal government coming down on the state for certain things, and the state is really tightening their reins. You know, they were a little loose for a little while, and, um, they're just getting up to par, and, and that trickles down to us. So, which is good practice, and make sure we're doing what we're doing, um, which is okay. So we'll be dealing with that in June. This audit looks at, um, not just your financials, but they're gonna be looking at data also. They're gonna come in, they're gonna test our SIMS data, they're gonna look to make sure what we're reporting is accurate. So it's really a full-blown, top-to-bottom audit of, you know, where your Chapter Seventy money comes from and all your data comes from for your reports, to what we're getting, how we're filing, are we meeting our compliance? So, um, bring it on, we'll be ready, and we'll get through it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, any questions or comments for Mrs. Perangeli? Hearing none, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Principal Report, Webster Middle School, good evening, Ms. Peterson.
Good evening. Um, so, uh, wanna talk about our turnaround, um, progress. So currently, we've been working with, uh, the state and the SSOS committee and, um, getting our, um, uh, things together. So currently, we have five committees that are looking at different things for the, the progress on the turnaround. Uh, one that we have just started is a school climate committee, so we're, that committee is working on, producing a, uh, survey for staff, students, and parents. Um, it'll be three separate surveys, but asking the same questions, uh, toward each, each group of people. Um, we also have our PBIS committee, which has been ongoing. Um, a scheduling committee, which has been working with Dr. Gogan, as she had reported earlier. And then, once the, um, reports come in from the state, we have an unpacking committee which will be reviewing the information from the state reports. And then we have a writing, um, committee which will look at what the unpacking committee, um, called out, and, uh, will start writing, um, the sustainability plan formerly known as the turnaround plan. So, uh, we've, the state has, um, completed, uh, faculty survey, just for overall curriculum and climate, um, done by the AIR, which is a separate entity than the state's, a private, so it's, um, done separately. They're supposed to be finishing that this week, I believe. We are currently at, um, seventy-nine percent completion, which is pretty good. Um, so we're looking for at least eighty-five percent, but a hundred would be great, too. Um, we had our principal interview from the AIR, uh, over vacation. Mr. Zajak and I sat for two hours, uh, with the, with the AIR person over the phone. Uh, we actually have two or three questions that we didn't finish. So we have to reschedule that, because we then had a meeting with the turnaround, the SSOS team, so they were coming to the school, so we had to wrap that up. So, um, we all had the AIR visit today, so we had two people from the state coming in and, um, visiting classrooms, and we will have those, uh, that feed back in a couple of weeks, hopefully, is what they tell us. So, um, that is all part of our turnaround plan. Um, we talked about PBIS, uh, as I said, that committee's been going strong since, um, lot before, beginning of the year, prior to that as well. Um, but we've been looking at focus areas to improve school climate. Um, and so we just had a recent event where students turned in their earned, uh, tickets for, from PBIS. Um, and it cost five tickets for them to get into the event after school. We had two separate times, one for fifth and sixth grade, right after school until four, and then a separate event for seventh and eighth grade from four-thirty to six. Um, our numbers were really good, uh, we had about a hundred and twenty-fifth and sixth graders and about eighty-seventh and eighth graders. Uh, we were concerned about, uh, what we would see with seventh and eighth graders having to come back after, but we were very pleased in that number, and the kids were waiting at the door way before four-thirty, ready to come in and enjoy the gym and games and dance and snacks. Um, so we had staff volunteers for both of those sessions. Uh, everything went swimmingly well, no problems at all, the students loved it, uh, asking when the next event is going to be. Um, staff, uh, was enjoy, uh, enjoyed it as well, very impressed with students and, um, how much they enjoyed it, too. So I wanna, um, thank Meg Lazarowski, who is kind of the head, spearhead of the PBIS committee and really got this event up and running. So we're looking at a next event in April, um, which will be an earned event as well, something to do with a cookout, maybe, so put that bug in people's ears. Um, and then, prior to vacation, we held an around-the-world tournament, which is an annual event at the middle school, uh, part of, part of the culture at the middle school. Um, so, uh, it was a Harry Potter theme, each grade level, it was a Harry Potter house, and they got really into, um, wearing house colors and, uh, the teachers wearing their, um, graduation gowns and part of the faculty and Harry Potter shirts, some of which I've never knew, and, so I'm gonna have to invest in a Harry Potter shirt, I guess. Um, so the gym, they decorated the gym, separated all the sections, the students all participated. It was really great to see, again, part of that, that climate culture building, the students all cheering for the kids who were involved in the event. Um, and then the students who made all ten shots were, they had a separate section. We brought the faculty couches in, and, uh, it was our prefect lounge, so they got snacks and it, um, made a big to-do for the, to the students who made their ten shots. So, um, Penny Barrel, uh, one of our phys ed teachers, led that event. So that, that's what's going on at the middle school, any questions?
Thank you very much, any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, thank you for joining us, we appreciate it. Continuing on with the agenda, under Old Business, the first item under Old Business is Monthly Fundraising Applications. And I say this all the time, but just a reminder, per school committee policy, we review publicly fundraisers that have already been approved by the building principal and the superintendent. First one is the Park Ave PTO, uh, we're selling a variety of candy and other goods at a dance back in January. The Park Ave PTO also had the Color Wars, um, back in January. The National Junior Honors Society and the Student Council had a, I'm sorry, will be having a semi-formal dance. It appears on February twenty-eighth, if I read this correctly. And the Drama Club is currently selling dinner theater tickets. The Drama Club is putting on a dinner theater show at the Raceway on March first at five PM. Anyone who's interested in purchasing tickets should call the office.
Yes.
Is that fair to say, at Bartlett? Um, there are always wonderful shows. Also, the middle school DC, Washington DC trip, they are selling a Dino Calendar raffle for the month of April two thousand twenty. So anyone who's interested in purchasing a raffle can call the middle school. And finally, the, as Logan mentioned, the Student Council is sponsoring a Bartlett, Mr. Bartlett competition, which will be held on March twelfth at Thursday, uh, Thursday, March twelfth at seven PM. And those are, all of these fundraisers are posted on our website. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda under Old Business is Approval of FY twenty-one Budget.
Uh, we would like to ask the school committee to approve the budget that we have presented to you in the tune of twenty-two million...
We would like to ask the school committee to approve the budget that we have presented to you in the tune of $22,633,533,000. We feel very confident in the budget. We feel that it aligns very well with the Student Opportunity Act.
I forgot to mention in my report that Superintendent and I went and met with the town administrator and town accountant a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was now. And sat down to discuss our budget and the outlook for the town. And right now, they're feeling pretty comfortable about the way things look. They were comfortable with our budget moving forward and overall felt like the community was in good shape. So, providing nothing pops up or changes, we feel good working together with the town moving forward to town meeting.
So, nothing obviously has changed since the last presentation. The overall estimated, or the overall increase at this point is 817,683 from last year. Now, even though, I know it's projections at this point, even though our projected Chapter 70 funding is higher than that, we still feel comfortable with this number, even if there's additional monies through the Student Opportunity Act?
The additional funds for the Student Opportunity Act are included in this budget. And I think there's some misconceptions about that money.
That was part of the Chapter 70 formula.
I thought that the estimated Chapter 70 increase was 1.2 million.
Correct, which is, which reflects the Student Opportunity Act.
Right, so we're asking for an increase of 817,000, but we're actually.
The increase is more, correct. So.
The increase is.
In Chapter 70 was 1.12 and we're asking for 875. And we feel comfortable with the budget. We've been, we've been through it. We've met with our admin team, looked at staffing throughout the district. And we feel confident that the budget supports what we're doing right now in the district.
Supports the students. It really does support the students and the needs of the district.
Are there any questions or comments from the members? What is the desire of the committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Sediki.
I would like to make a motion to approve the budget as presented. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Laura, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Abstain. Next item on the agenda under new business is approval of out-of-state field trip Webster Middle School, Grade 5, to Hyde Cultural Center. We received a request from Mrs. Baggett that the Salt Marsh Opera Company has invited the entire fifth-grade class to participate in watching, and I cannot pronounce the name of that opera.
Cinderella.
At the Hyde Cultural Center in Woodstock, Connecticut. The date of the field trip is April 7th, and I think this is, this has been happening for many years.
Yes, it has.
I can speak to that if you want.
Sure.
So, Mrs. Baggett had, had asked me to speak because she couldn't be here this evening. But yes, you're correct. This has been going on for several years and the way she described the program, to me, it sounds like a high-quality presentation. The, the company actually comes to the school at the end of March to do a pre, pre-field trip program with the students and review opera and review the story and what they are going to see. Mrs. Baggett said that this event is well-received by the students. And she makes it a big trip. They have to dress up a little bit and it, because this is something that most of our students probably would never have an opportunity to, to be involved in. And I'd, I asked if I could go, too, so. But because it's an out-of-state trip, that's why we need the approval.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the middle school field trip to Hyde Cultural Center in Woodstock, Connecticut on April 7th.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing, hearing none. Laura, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda under new business is discussion and approval of 2020-2021 school calendar. Dr. Gogan.
Thank you. We have presented a cheat sheet for you to see the comparison from this school year to next school year. And the calendar has been designed in accordance with the WEA Union Contract. The teachers can't start. I think it's two weeks prior to Labor Day. So, we actually did meet with the union and presented an earlier start and then this calendar. And it was their opinion that the teachers would not vote in agreement for an earlier start. So, as you can see, this lines up exactly close to what our calendar looks like this year. The first day of, for the teachers would be August 31st as opposed to August 26th this year. We would have two, three professional development days prior to the students coming into school. The first day of school would be September 3rd for our students in first grade through 12th. Our parent-teacher conferences would be November 10th and November 12th. Our holiday break would be December 24th through the 31st. Our winter break would be February 15th through 19th. Our spring break would be April 19th through 23rd. High school graduation would be June 11th, which is later than usual for us. We do have MCAS going on in the high school the first week in June, so we looked at that. And then, we did list our professional development days and half-days. We're going to stick with that kind of calendar. This calendar was vetted by the administrative team, then shared with the union. And this is the final result.
Any questions or comments from the members? So, if anybody complains about graduation meeting the second Friday in June.
Talk to me?
No, talk to me.
Oh.
Hearing no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the 2020-2021 school calendar as approved, as presented.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Laura, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, it's a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is approval of 2020-2021 Bartlett High School Program of Studies.
Before we get into the detail, I just want to give you a little bit of background. We've been working on this program of studies, the high school administrative team, the teachers and the staff. I would say since November. So, it's been a very long process. And I will pass it over to Principal Thomas and Assistant Principal Karen Kussler.
There are any number of changes. I think, I don't even know where to begin with what would be the highest priority. I think one of the things that we set out to do was create different pathways and more flexibility for kids to reach their graduation requirements. We also wanted to kind of front-load the credits a little bit more so that we don't run into the situation where we have a senior who fails a, a half-year course, fails gym or health or something like that. And now, it's in danger of not graduating because that's not going to be offered at summer school. So, we wanted to increase those requirements. We wanted to make sure we were meeting our MasCor standards. Align it with that. The NHA program has changed in terms of more flexibility. The minimum requirements have changed. It's not changed the program at all. But we're trying to make it more like a college readiness program as opposed to creating a, a barrier to allow other kids to take AP classes. So, their copies have the changes in red.
There's a, there's a cover page here and the red is highlighted with the changes.
There's a cheat sheet that basically followed out and basically said where a page and what a change was. So, that's that front page versus the entire full program of studies. So, we, again, I know some of the things we had looked at were looking at some of the other program of studies throughout the, our regional area. So, that's why you see some of the changes of the grade changes. Our D level was a 65, a 64 was failing. And to make our, you know, to look at the way that we get compared to the state with other schools, we looked at making that change where it's more typical of 60 being that lower D-minus grade and 59 becoming an F. We also looked at, and I know Principal Thomas made a comment about the requirements and about the number of credits per class. So, one of the things that we looked at was you could fail a number of classes and then still move from freshman year into sophomore year. And by the time you hit junior year, if you only had done the minimum credits that were in that program of studies as a senior, you had to pass everything in order to be successful and earn your diploma at the end of that year. So, instead, we wanted to look at the requirements of math and science, of math and English, being a class that had to be passed to be able to move on to get to the next grade. So, those are those changes from the, the numbers that you see in the changes from freshman to sophomore year. I think those are more of the, or some of the, the high pieces also about some of the, the major changes. A lot of the other changes in there are just wording changes. Some phrases that were in there that were, we were kind of like, why is that in the program of studies? So, kind of going through and just making it more readable and hopefully user-friendly with some of the edits and some of the formatting pieces that happened as well.
Updating some of the course descriptions to be more accurate and, again, trying to standardize the language.
One of the things that we were working with the high school administration with on is to increase the pathways for kids. And so, one of the major things that you did with this program of studies is combined the opportunities for kids to take a course. We removed the college label and we combined college and honors. And you can go into a class and either get college or honors. So, what we're hoping to have happen with each of these courses is to have a full course syllabus. So, kids prior to taking a class can see what they have to do and that they're engaged in, do I want to get an honors credit for this? Or am I going to do, we want student engagement. And we, you know, to have the syllabus to know what exactly is going to be taught and what is expected of students to get the higher grade. And that's, you know, a work in progress.
The same thing goes for honors to an accelerated situation. So, currently, we have a, a student in a math program that was in an honors program decided that she wanted a challenge of doing accelerated. So, the requirements to do so have been laid out. The student is now approaching that. And then, next year, they'll be able to take more AP-type courses that they want to. So, we want to, just like the college readiness program, we do not want to limit the, the AP experience to just get to our NHA.
And another major piece behind that was knowing that, that a small school struggles with their singleton classes. The classes that are one section and only having that one opportunity to be able to be, be put into a schedule. The way that we're looking at it now, if we merge things together and you have those options within a classroom, you're able to sustain a better class size and be able to offer more rather than being able to offer less.
One thing that's not included here in the program of studies that we're working on right now, currently with Nichols, I did have a meeting with the president and the vice president of academics. They can offer college-level courses for us, for any student. And they're putting together a list of what courses they could offer us in a blended learning environment. So, that would give any student the opportunity to take a college-level course at junior and seniors and be able to go to the campus for some of it, be able to do some of it online. And they do that for a small fee. So, we're working with them to expand again our opportunities for students. That's not included in here, but that's a work in progress.
Similarly, we're doing the same thing with QuinSig.
Yep.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Blais.
So, I love the new history offerings. So, how many credits for history do you need? Like, what is the graduation requirement for history now? Is it 10 credits? Like, what does?
It's three. So, it's three full courses, so it's the 15 credits.
Okay, it's 15. Okay. All right, so they could choose, I just, I like the, the new, the new courses.
Yeah, so it gives an opportunity, especially in their senior year, to have some of those more seminar-type courses that we offered in other departments. And obviously, for students who want to choose, that gives them an opportunity to fill that as an elective rather than being, having to be forced into some of, just the other electives that are already available in the building.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
But one course for, needs to be in US history. Is that accurate?
Correct. So, it's still required, that you are still required to take the US I, the US II, and World History. But any combination of, so whether it's the honors or whether it's the AP, so those are still the required courses at the time.
Okay. Our daughters have only taken World History freshman and sophomore year. And I've asked about this in the past.
That's because there's a change, so when.
Change in the state curriculum. That's what the.
So, now, they have to take two years of US history moving forward?
Or are they grandfathered? I don't know how that.
Because I think that would be unfortunate.
Oh, I'm sorry. Which, which grade are your daughters in? Let me just start with that. So, the 10th grade. So, if I'm correct, the 10th grade students took World last year and then they transitioned and they're taking US History I.
No.
So, what are they taking this year?
AP World.
So, they've already done AP World. They did US I, so it's a US, they didn't do US. So, what did they take for history last year?
World.
World.
It's two years of Worlds.
Okay. I, again, I apologize for not being able to answer all of those questions. I know that there's one, that's one of the reasons why one of those courses is not running next year. And I know it's a transition year and partially that starts with the civics courses being offered in the eighth grade. So, I know that we still had some work that we were working on and I can't answer specifically for that graduating class, unfortunately. Sorry.
But it is something that we're aware of and I it's something we're going to have to address. I, I don't, the, the state doesn't necessarily, they give you a lot of latitude in your sequencing.
Okay. So, in terms of the graduation requirements, because you're saying that there, there is three courses required. Two have to be US, but for the entering freshman college, only, they only require two courses. Are, are the graduation requirements listed here?
Graduation requirements are on page like six or seven in the book.
Okay, so, three courses, World and US. So, it could be two World and one US?
Correct. And that's what I was going to say. I know that typically what ends up happening more so with social studies than some of the other departments is vocals such as Webster has their own requirements of US I, US II, and World History. The state basically says you have to take X number of credits and, and graduate and have a, a well-balanced education in social studies. They're not saying it has to be US I, US II, and World. And so, I know that that's still the work in progress with the Social Studies History Department currently at Webster.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we're eliminating French altogether?
Yes.
And Latin American film, if I read this correctly, would count as a world language course?
Yes. What we're, what we're trying to do in, in that regard is, again, with, with programs like Nichols, we have not been successful in having like ESL students or some students on IP's into that program. If we can get students into a class like that and then take an AP Spanish, that would satisfy their AP course requirements for Nichols. So, we're trying to open up things for native language speakers. And this is something that a lot of communities that have a growing Latino population are trying to do.
So, what happens to the kids that are in French currently?
Well, we had to add French this year because it was a second year of students who had taken it last year.
Can I say that again?
So, we had kids who took French I last year.
Right.
So, we had to add two sections this year so that those kids could get their two-year foreign language requirement.
And French I wasn't offered.
Right.
So, we didn't leave anybody high and dry in there to, or trying to meet the MasCor requirements of the two consecutive years of a language.
I have another question. And first, I just want to comment, I do really love the opportunity or the combined classes and the opportunity to earn honors credits. And I liked your explanation in terms of now you are able to consolidate and ultimately offer more than offer less, which I do like that. In terms of the dual enrollment courses, how do students find out that information and parents for that matter?
So, we, there are things that we have to finalize. That's why we put in there, there will be additional options that we're working on right now. So, for example, the QuinSig process, one of the things that Dr. Gogan and I are running into is because we have a rotating schedule. into is because we have a rotating schedule, it's very difficult for professors to come here. They can't come, like, every Wednesday or whatever because it's a different day schedule. So, the option for QuinSig, for example, is to have our teachers apply to be like a temporary professor from there. So, there's a application process, there's a training process. You need to have a master's degree, you need to submit it to the dean of each college, et cetera. And then, they, they will approve you to take it and you have to do the week-long training. So, that process, we can't say who's going to do it right now. And then, it needs to line up with a certificate that, that QuinSig is going to offer, similarly to Nichols. So, we're trying to broaden that out. When we have that, obviously, we would be able to advertise that to students. The sooner the better. But I don't, it's one of those things that is evolving and there's a few variables at this time that we can't. But we're trying to, I, I think that giving more flexibility to students is going to allow them to say, you know what, I'd rather take that instead of this.
Right. So, I guess I'm just wondering, I can't recall, like, at what point the students are making their selections for next year. Will that be in place?
Well, hopefully. We want to make the schedule done before students leave, before the end of the year. Where I hope, one of the things that we're waiting for was the school calendar to be finalized because you need that to physically build the schedule in Power School. But then, to be able to run a draft a couple of times to see what's happening there. But there are always, some students sign up for a course and they decide they don't want to take it over the summer and it's a course change, that sort of thing. So, we may have a teacher that originally was planning to offer an AP or an honors course and is instead going to do a dual enrollment. I would say that meets the requirement of an honors or an AP class, but it would be of a similar content area.
I love it. How much support do the students get as they go through the course selection process?
Well, this is my first time going through that with them. But I think one of the, one of the goals, one of the things that we have here that hamstrings us in some areas but is good for another is, we don't have a large student body. So, if the seniors are leaving, there are a small number of students. So, our goal is to have at least guidance meet with every kid and certainly teachers, department heads, meeting with students to go over their course offerings. And then, provide the course of studies and syllabus to the parents to go home so that they understand, you know, what their options are and what it entails.
And I also loved this as well. I thought that was a nice addition.
Thank you.
To, you know, even work on with my daughter at home. And I think parents would find, will find it useful. Thank you. I added that because I get the same thing. Having gone through that process with my daughters, you know, I said that there's some of those children who enter into this whole world and want to start with that four-year plan as those incoming freshmen. They really want to think about what they're doing over that time and providing just a workbook at the end or, you know, the worksheets at the end just gives an opportunity to really give that focus of, it's a four-year plan. It's not just one year.
And as we're working on this, I think you hit the nail on the head, Mrs. Naparada, communication. So, communication to eighth graders coming over, having those kind of meetings, you know, walking kids through the process, not just the Nichols honors students know, need to know what, and we did put this little graph in here about what happens each year with Nichols honors. I know the guidance staff was working on a brochure. That communication piece is an area that we really need to work on. You know, once this is finalized, I'm hoping that you send home, you know, a letter to the parents and then set up some sort of structure for the students at the high school and then an opportunity for the eighth-grade students to take a look at the program of studies and maybe even a parent night with the eighth-grade students to help select. Because it's, you know, we, we don't want to, we want to guide students, but we don't want them to be independently picking and willy-nillying their way through because then we end up with seniors and juniors that have lots of courses to make up. So, what we're trying to do with this program of studies is put those structures in place, but communication is key.
And I can answer to the fact that I know that that's part of the guidance staff's conversation because I could hear them this afternoon talking about that. With the use of Power School and using Power School as the avenue for students to make their selections, it's changed over time. It's not just on that piece of paper and in the booklet. So, figuring out how to facilitate parents being able to say, okay, this is not just what my child decided, that yes, I've approved and taken a look at that along with the teacher recommendations and the other parts that go along with the course selection process. So, I know it's still a work in progress, but I do know that that is the conversation and it all starts there.
For the journalism electives, it seems as though most of the work that is done in those courses is focused around the school newspaper, school newspaper and the school television station. Do we have a school newspaper and a school television station? We do not. So, how can a four courses be directly, unless I misread the description, it seems as though the entire course is focusing on those two programs?
Yes. And that's one of the things that I don't believe we're going to end up offering. I, we ask people to create that course syllabus because there were several things that seemed to be replicated that didn't really seem to be different from each other.
Right.
And the end product is non-existent. So, that's one of the areas that we have concern. Unfortunately, the teacher who usually taught that is out on medical leave and has been out for the entirety of the year. So, it's kind of like included in there, but we're not really sure if that gentleman is going to return and take over at that spot.
And just, this may be an unanticipated type, but when you look at the sequential chart for English, in the 12th grade, Journalism 4 is not listed.
Okay.
Just as a.
I think that's because by the time, again, there may have been a reason why it wasn't there. And I can't recall what, there was a reason. There was something about that.
Okay. Because it's listed as a course offered.
Yeah.
Then I must have missed it.
But it's not.
I must have missed it on the, I must have been on one side and I meant to go because there were some that were full years and half years.
And it gets confusing, I'm sure, when you look at this.
Yes, it did. But thank you. We can correct that.
Any other questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Sidiki.
Just in reviewing this, what, what really struck me is that, you know, even, where is it, about the Nichols Honor Academy, that we're changing the language to say, basically, students that are entering into Bartlett with the intention of moving forward into a four-year education are eligible. And we removed highest performing and these other things. And I really feel that that creates an environment where even kids that are not the highest performing quite yet but might have those aspirations have something to reach for. It inspires hope and opens up doors. And that seemed to be a theme throughout the handbook, that, you know, some of the language has been changed and replaced with other ways of wording things to create opportunities and, and hope for kids. So, that was something that I noticed and wanted to compliment you on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, what is the desire of the committee related to the Bartlett High School Program of Studies for 2020-21?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Sidiki.
Is it fair to say that we might have some more work that needs to be done related to the journalism piece? Or, I mean, we're not in a position to approve this yet. Is that fair or?
I think it hinges upon a personnel matter that I'm not sure is going to be resolved in, in, in a way that's going to allow us to answer that. My, my guess is that it would not be offered, but I, I can't say that right now.
Would it be fair to offer? We have other courses that are listed in the program of studies as not being offered for the 2021 school year to either move forward and leave that as a course that still stays just so it doesn't remove from the SIMS and the EPIMS system or get removed as a permanent piece so we can have that further discussion. But then, it doesn't delay the opportunity for us to move forward, being able to get the program of studies out to the students if we just say it's not going to be offered for next year.
I was just going to make a comment about what I said before. I think it's very important that each of these courses and the teachers develop a syllabus. And in the syllabus is going to be more detail. These are snapshots in the program of studies. We need more than a snapshot on what's going to happen in any given course, especially because we're opening up the opportunity for anyone to take an honors course. We need the teachers to clearly delineate what is going to be expected of students. So, I would recommend that this be approved, knowing that we certainly, this is a snapshot. We would be asking teachers to be putting together syllabus. The reason I would want this to be approved is because the communication and the teamwork that has to happen with students and their parents to select courses, we want that to be a little bit more engaging than it has been in the past. We want the parents to see the program of studies. We want the kids to have opportunities to, to look and plan. I want to see you working with the eighth-grade students and the eighth-grade parents to acclimate them to a program of studies. And if we keep waiting, with MCAS happening, our time limits get crunched. So, that would be my recommendation. Contingent upon knowing that we are expecting the administration to collect syllabus, syllabi on each of these courses to have the detail. Because we did point that out, that the journalism courses were really, in the last program of studies, bunched into one narrative. And it was me who said, wait a minute, but separate them. They're four different classes. And because they didn't have the teacher to go to, they repeated the narrative. Does that make sense?
It does. And again, I only raised the question because my wife and I have had a few kids go through the school and I had never heard of either one. I think I've seen the totem pole a couple of times, but it, that's the only reason why I raised it. I didn't want to cause a big issue. But when I was reading through the descriptions, I said to myself, I'm not sure if these exist.
We asked the same questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is it possible to get a teacher? Because it would be great for students to participate in a class that has an actual product that would be so beneficial for the student body and the community.
I mean, I actually know in Douglas, because I knew a young man who did it. He, they had Tiger TV. And he liked it so much, they ended up studying film production up at Pittsburgh and is now working in that industry. So, I agree if it's at all possible.
Because I know one of the things that I also noted on that was, unlike some of our other courses, it's technically, right now, a full-year course for five credits. And not that I wanted to go to Journalism 8, but I did think of an AB situation only because to be able to put it in as semesterized courses and either link it with something else or have it run, run independently may also be another opportunity. I know in, in other districts, we've also used it as a student section of the newsletter and reporting information out. So, whether we have the full-fledged being able to do an entire newspaper, there's definitely the opportunity to have the student voice being able to share information about the good that's happening at Bartlett in a newsletter format as well.
And it is such a functional course and functional skills, really, the whole communication piece.
You don't think there's fake news going around? I don't disagree with that.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's just heavily personnel-dependent right now. We have someone who's covering that class that's not able to.
And we understand that.
Delineate that right now.
So, it sounds like the plan is that we would approve this program of studies tonight.
Right.
It would enable you to create your, your schedules and then.
Your course syllabus.
Okay. So, that, this is hinging on, the course syllabus is hinging on the approval of this?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Sidiki.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the program of studies as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And let me just follow up by thanking the two of you and your staff. I know a lot of, and the students. And I know a lot of work went into trying to redefine this type of document. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, Laurie, just pull the committee, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, it's a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of donation from Real Madrid Mopfre.
I think I had informed you at a previous meeting that Mr. Pronto and I were working on a grant for the Real Madrid program through Foundation Mopfre. And we wrote the grants and have been working with them. And they are willing to donate funds to us in the amount of.
$15,800.
For three sessions. So, the plan for this program is to offer the Real Madrid sports program to our second language learners. And we would hope to start this April with, and these dates are incorrect in your notes. We'd like to start this April and start with soccer. And then, next fall, do basketball. And then, following that with a year of soccer and a session of soccer and a session of basketball. So, I did write to them today because their dates are a little messed up in terms of their donation. I will be signing an agreement. They are anxious to get this started. We have posted for coaches. They will be sending over coaches from Spain to train our coaches. And Mr. Pronto will be overseeing this new opportunity for our second language learners.
So, would you like us this evening to potentially accept a total dollar amount?
Yes.
Part of that potentially being in this fiscal year and part of it being spent next fiscal year?
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the committee? And obviously, once again, thank you very much to your efforts in Mopfre and partnership that we've developed with them. Hearing no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to accept the donation of $15,800 to be used in this current fiscal year as well as potentially next fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, just pull the committee, please.
Yes.
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 Yes, it's a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is equal education opportunities policy, JBB, second reading. Again, a per-school committee policy, anytime there's a new policy or an amended policy presented, we do go through three readings. This is the second reading of this new policy presented to us. I don't believe, Dr. Gogan, there's been any changes made to these.
No, there, there, there have not. But before we move on, can I just back up the train for a second on the donation? The total amount of the donation is $47,400 is what they're willing to give us over the course of this year, next year, and it may even be more. So, they broke it up, which made it very confusing. And I'm not sure I was clear in my explanation. So, we've requested $15,800 for each sport to pay for coaches, uniforms, training. And so, they're willing, their paperwork that they sent over, they're willing to give us $47,400.
And we don't have to, we don't have to separate the fiscal years. So, the motion can be to accept the donation in that amount per the agreement.
And I'm sorry, the total was $47,400.
$4,400.
So, you're looking for an amended motion?
Yes, I apologize.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Hold on, one, let, just take a step back. Just formally, we're going back to item F, acceptance of donation from, from Real Madrid Mopfre, Mrs. Sidiki.
Now, I forgot the amount, $47,400.
$47,400.
I would like to make a motion to accept the donation from Fundación Mopfre in the amount of $47,400 as stated in their letter.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And again, thank you very much to Real Madrid Fundación. May it come close?
Yes.
Yes.
I was an engineering guy, was awful in language. And of course, Mopfre. No, hearing no further discussion, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, it's a unanimous vote. And obviously, this vote will override the one that was taken a moment ago. Continuing on now with the agenda, the next item is the equal education opportunities policy, JBB, second reading. As I just mentioned, we, per-school committee policy, will read all three times any new policy that's presented with the expectation that the policy be presented at the third reading. So, again, I assume that this, there was no changes?
No.
And just for the final document, because we unfortunately missed the last meeting, the second reading and third reading would just have to be amended down.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, that will constitute the second reading of the equal education opportunities policy. Next item on the agenda is homeless students enrollment rights and services policy, JFABD, second reading. Same explanation as the previous policy. Again, there have been no changes to this policy?
No.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, that would constitute the second reading of the Proposed Homeless Students Enrollment Rights and Services Policy. Next item on the agenda is the Educational Opportunities for Military Children Policy, JFABE's second reading. Any changes to this policy, Dr. Gogan?
No.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, that will be, that would, will constitute the second reading of the Proposed Educational Opportunities for Military Children Policy. Next item on the agenda is Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care Policy, JFABF's second reading. Any changes to this policy, Dr. Gogan?
No.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, that will constitute the second reading of the Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care Policy. Next item on the agenda is Review Transfer Signing of Bills, Payroll, and Vouchers. I will entertain a motion to transfer twenty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents from the Bartlett High School Student Activity Savings Account to the Bartlett High School Student Activity Checking Account.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. And just for the public's sake, the majority of that dollar amount is closing out the class of 2018 and the class of 2019 and the class of 2012. And I believe we're required for those funds to be transferred to the class officers of those classes after they graduate. Is that fair?
That is correct. That is correct. And if we can't get in touch with any of them, I know we still have a couple of old ones, I think thirteen, fourteen. So, we're doing our due diligence to reach out to class officers. If for some reason we can't, we will come back to the committee and ask for the funds to be turned over, to be spent with, on, for the school on behalf of the committee to put a special fund at the recommendation of the auditors.
Well, thank you for working on that. I know this has been a...
One in my side for a little bit.
I was gonna be a little more polite, but is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please? Oh, was there a motion? Or did I skip that part? You made the motion, right?
Sheila.
Mrs. Sediki.
Staying with our tradition, Sheila made the motion I seconded.
Leaving you all completely.
That's okay, we got this.
Get the motion, I'm sorry.
Yes.
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 Abstain. Next item, oh, we're under Review Transfer Signing of Payroll, Vouchers, and Bills.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Sediki.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's a unanimous vote, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.